All right, I'm going to call the November 3rd, 2025 Alderman meeting at 10:00 a.m. to order. I'd love for everyone to stand up please and Reverend Alderman Lo Davis for invocation followed by the pledge.
Thank you. Let us pray. Most gracious and loving God, we thank you for the blessings you bestow upon each of us and on this community, on all who live here, visit here, work here. We ask today that you guide us in your wisdom and in your kindness to make good and right decisions and to speak with each other in kindness. Amen.
Before we get going, I did just want to mention that Mayor Alts had to go out of town for a death in the family. He is returning this afternoon but was not going to be able to be here for this meeting. We have spoken at length about the agenda and he is paying attention as he can when his travels allow him to do so today. So with that said, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do not.
All right, then we move for the approval of the consent agenda. Is there second? Any discussion?
I'll just highlight a few of the items for everyone. So the first item is a sidewalk repair contract. So our ongoing yearly sidewalk repairs around town, which was budgeted in the current FY26 budget process. But this is just a contract to approve after the bids went out to do several sections around town in the next few months. The second item, which was also approved in the budget, is repairs to Indian Trail Meeting Hall. After a structural analysis, there were several repairs that were needed to be made to that structure. So that is that contract after the bid went out as well for that project.
Specifically, where are those structural problems?
I'll ask Tom Stanley to come up for that one.
Let me just jump in here for a second because I forgot to read the ethic statement. If any members know of any conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest concerning matters on the agenda, please so state it this time. Hearing none. All right. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna call the November 3rd, 2025 Alderman Meeting at 10:00 a.m. to order. I'd love for everyone to stand up, please, and Reverend Alderman Lo Davis for invocation, followed by the pledge.
Thank you. Let us pray. Most gracious and loving God, we thank you for the blessings you bestow upon each of us and on this community, on all who live here, visit here, work here. We ask today that you guide us in your wisdom and in your kindness to make good and right decisions and to speak with each other in kindness. Amen. And to the Republic, which is sacred, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going, I did just want to mention that Mayor Alts had to go out of town for a death in the family. He is returning this afternoon but was not going to be able to be here for this meeting. We have spoken at length about the agenda and he is paying attention as he can when his travels allow him to do so today. So with that said, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do not.
All right, then we move for the approval of the consent agenda. Is there second? Any discussion?
I'll just highlight a few of the items for everyone. So the first item is a sidewalk repair contract. So our ongoing yearly sidewalk repairs around town, which was budgeted in the current FY26 budget process, but this is just a contract to approve after the bids went out to do several sections around town in the next few months. The second item, which was also approved in the budget, is repairs to Indian Trail Meeting Hall. After a structural analysis, there were several repairs that were needed to be made to that structure. So that is that contract after the bid went out as well for that project.
Specifically, where are those structural problems?
I'll ask Tom Stanley to come up for that one.
Let me just jump in here for a second because I forgot to read the ethic statement. If any members know of any conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest concerning matters on the agenda, please so state it this time. Hearing none. All right. Thank you.
Good morning. So the structural repairs are gonna be on crawl space and floor structure. When you walk around Indian Trail, there's some soft spots. During the structural assessment, there was a lot of termite damage and rot damage. So they're gonna be replacing all the girders around. There's some brick and lintel damage in the back. They're gonna fix on the back wall on the outside and place a new door. And also, since we're doing structural repairs to bring it up to meeting facility codes, we're increasing the floor strength to 100 pounds per square feet.
Are the front steps, do they meet code?
They, I am not a building inspector, but they met code when they were built. So unless you're going to change things, yes, they would have met code when they're done. And also, the front deck is gonna be repaired as well. Where's sagging?
How about the railings for those steps?
They met code when they were built.
No, I mean, they're gonna be repaired.
If there are damages, once they lift up, I suspect that once they lift up the sagging front deck, the front portion out kinda got a sag, it's got a two-inch sag in it. I suspect once they lift that up, there's gonna be a few other things that need to be addressed. And I suspect the same thing underneath. Once they start tearing things apart, I suspect them finding out things as well. I mean, that's what happens when you start working on old buildings.
Thank you.
The third item, the third item is the community building deck out here, which was also budgeted this year. It's in need of repair. So the company will be replacing the deck that exists out there similar to how it is now. So it'll be a new, nice deck outside the community building. The next item is a resolution from the board from our Bonnet's Creek Flood Reduction Grant that we're applying for. They just need the board to sign off on that and designate myself and Tom Z as the authorized officials for that project. So we're hopeful that once all that concludes, we'll have some good grant money to continue our stormwater mitigation process around town. And then finally, the fire department is undergoing an ISO inspection in the next few weeks. And they just need a formal resolution from the board to say that they are indeed a fire department of the city. So that's what that resolution is. So that concludes the consent agenda.
A question. I'm in favor of four of the five items in the consent agenda. Should I make a motion that we remove that one? Then vote separately.
We have a motion and a second already, so we need to vote on that one first.
For the record, I think the motion is as it relates to the agenda, not the consent agenda. No?
The consent agenda.
Because we've got, did we? I think we might. Did we, no? Did we vote to approve the agenda? Because that comes before the consent agenda.
All right, you want to remove your motion to approve the consent agenda, and then we'll go back to the agenda.
So is there an avenue by which we could?
Yeah, we can take that item separately.
It's number item three. Should be no surprise to anybody.
All right, so.
So we'll just make that G1.
Would you like to make a motion to do that, Lo?
Yes, I move that we take item three from the consent agenda and move it to the regular agenda.
For a second.
Thank you.
All in favor? Three, oh, four, okay. Unanimous? All right, so we've moved F3 to item G1 in the regular agenda. And now I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that change. Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. And then the approval of the consent agenda with the change removing F3. I have a motion to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. All right, so now on to the agenda. So we're going to do the community building deck replacement contract. Alderman Davis, you wanted to speak about this?
I've been opposed to this consistently because I think that we should at least give it a try to not have a deck and have grass instead. And for weddings and other events where there is ineffective procession from the building steps out to the deck that can be taken care of with a red carpet. This is very commonplace at other wedding venues outside. And we can save $55,000 by doing that. And it's environmentally better.
I would just point out, I don't know that we'd save 55 because we're still doing a portion of the work to tear out and then put back grass and probably irrigation.
And irrigation, in theory, could be more expensive than decking, going back in.
Yeah, I mean, so we don't say 55. Let's say we save 25. I mean, it's tax money that we can save.
I would say that it's not as environmentally responsible to use ongoing watering of grass to try to maintain a golf course-like patch outside of here. It has to be to such a standard that unless we, most of the venues you're talking about that do do grass or like hotels or, I mean, these Uber venues, our grass and our way of growing grass under a big tree is not as successful, I don't think. And so for that reason, I would make a motion to approve the contract.
For a second. Any further discussion? Hang on.
I'll read the motion. Karen Mozzarella moves that the Board of Alderman approve the contract with Millennium Contractors, Inc. for the replacement of the community building deck in an amount not to exceed $55,000 as recommended by staff and authorize the execution of all necessary documents to proceed with the project.
Thank you.
And Frank seconded already. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passes. All right, moving on to shoreline stabilization project task order number six. Mr. Jarvis, are you joining us here? Thank you.
Good morning. As we're all aware, the Cape Fear River shoreline within the city of Southport is undergoing increasing erosion as time progresses. This is primarily due to the effects of wave action generated by wind from storms, boat and ship traffic, and the effects of an ongoing sea level increase. The city's engineering consultants, Olson Associates, they're now FOATH Olson. They were purchased about a year and a half ago by another firm, has been providing services to the city in the design permitting and construction of shoreline protection elements. To date, they've provided comprehensive topographic and cultural resource surveys. They've assisted with easement acquisition and advanced the project design. Permit applications for phases one and two of the project have been submitted and are now under review by KAMA and other state and federal agencies. The consultant is currently preparing final design and bidding documents for phase one of the project, which you could probably see on your handout. It's basically an installation of a rock revetment from the vicinity of Atlantic Avenue to the area near the Riverside Motel. And Olson Associates recently prepared their proposal for task order six for the next phase of the work on the project, which is shown on your handout as phase two. We're here seeking authorization to approve that task order. Olson's proposed work efforts for this phase of the work will be updating the topographic survey, developing final design, and preparing bid documents for, again, the phase two portion of the project, and they'll be providing bid phase services under this task. As I mentioned, the permit applications for phases one and two are being reviewed by state and federal agencies. We anticipate permit approvals by spring of 2026. And ideally, we could see approvals earlier if all goes well within the review process. And we really don't have any indications that those reviews will be held up by any outstanding issues. They were accepted. The applications were accepted, and there were very little questions prior to that acceptance. So we're somewhat optimistic that we can get our reviews early next year. The construction documents are expected to be prepared concurrently with the ongoing permit reviews. And those construction documents will be ready for bidding when we get the permit approvals. We're expecting bidding in spring of 2026, again, immediately after receipt of the permit approvals. The construction contract is expected to be awarded and a notice to proceed given to the contractor in late spring of 2026, and construction will commence immediately thereafter. We're expecting right now about a four-month construction duration. So we should see the project complete within the latter part of 2026. With that, I will entertain any questions you may have.
What's the deadline for getting things going?
We have a funding deadline of June 30, 2026. And it's my understanding that the project construction doesn't need to be completed by that date, but the funding has to be encumbered, which means we'll have to have awarded a contract to a contractor by that date. And based on the scheduling that we've been given by the consultant and, again, the feedback we're getting from the reviews, we don't expect that to be an issue. You're welcome.
Could I ask, do you have a breakdown for the spending of the $5 million? Do we know how much we've spent?
So I can get you that. We have not spent very much. The majority, which I think was around $40,000, has been, you know, initial consultant work, the legal work for the easements, et cetera. So we're not gonna spend a big portion of that till we get into the actual construction award phase. So I can get you all that definite breakdown, but we have not.
Because I just wanna make sure we don't leave any money on the table for, do we anticipate that we will be able to obligate the whole $5 million?
Our initial estimates that, well, the most recent estimates that were given by the consultant, and that's probably earlier this year, indicated that that $5 million would be spent. And what we'll do in the construction contract is put a series of what's called add alternates in the contract. And it's our intent that we spend the entire $5 million. If the costs exceed the $5 million, we'll be able to deduct one of the add alternates so that we are pretty sure that we'll spend that. And typically, for projects of this magnitude, we would expect to see consultant fees in the vicinity of 10%. So we'll see that number that Noah mentioned, that will climb a little bit with the final design and construction oversight.
Mr. Jarvis?
You go.
As seen here, this doesn't quite go to Atlantic. So is this an accurate depiction of what we're expecting? It looks like it goes to the private property there on Moore Street. At least that phase one, is that?
Yeah, that's correct. The phase one.
Just beyond here, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And then, so they're gonna do something in addition to the revetment we've already done? The emergency stuff that we did, or I don't know that it was emergency, but the stuff we did.
That's correct. They're going to reinforce the revetment that's along Bay Street here. They're going to add revetment along the bulkhead, near the park and the restaurant and the motel. And then the remainder, the beach reestablishment and the offshore breakwaters will occur down toward the other end of the project.
And, excuse me, we absolutely, definitely, Pinky Swear have all the easements, right?
Yes. So. Is that legally binding, what I just said? But yes.
I had a question because in your notes, it talks about spring of '26 and early summer of '26. Summer actually starts June 20th. So I'm a little concerned with these references only because if we could, March, so you have like 60 days, somehow you back it up that the goal, so you have 60 days to scramble at the very least at the end of the conversation.
Our, the reason there is somewhat of a vagary in the specific dates is entirely based on the approvals from the permitting. Again, everything is expected to go through. We have them in for review. There's a 75-day timeframe. We should have those approvals within plenty of time. I think that might have been a little pessimistic rather than optimistic when I originally wrote that, but we would anticipate awarding the contract and having that done by the 1st of June, let's say, at the latest, so.
Still, I know, I hear you. Is there any way, you know, sometimes, I don't know with the particular permitting agencies, but sometimes you can pay an extra fee or something for expediting. I don't know if that's something that.
I have a list here, and there's about 15 various permitting entities that this is going to go through. So there's just too many of them, but I do understand what you're saying.
So, you know, we've also tried to get our representatives involved to see if they can put pressure at state level for those agencies. You know, certainly the federal agencies in the shutdown now, that could provide a delay depending on how long that lasts. So, I mean, it's been, you know, due to prior administrations delays here. This is the situation we're in to get to the last minute.
Do you think there's an option for an extension on the deadline from the state?
So I've tried to ask about that. You know, Mr. Miller says he's not doing it again. You know, the language that state agencies use is encumbrance. You know, in my way of thinking, it's already encumbered. We have those money in a separate account. We're not using them for anything else. So, you know, they want to see us approve those contracts for the actual construction. So if we get to that day and the contracts have not been issued, it's gonna be up to state agency staff to determine if they wanna try to solicit that money back or not. But, I mean, they could probably, I don't know that they have our banking information to reach in and take it. So, you know, that could be an avenue, but I think we can certainly try to work with them to make sure that, hey, we're doing what we can on our end. This is y'all's agencies that are holding us up at this point. So I think we're good to meet those deadlines as best we can once the agencies get approvals.
Mr. Jarvis, you're working this way back. This is the deepest section, right?
Yes.
And from what I remember, it seems like it's the most expensive section because of the depth of the channel and all. Is that sort of right? Is it correct?
Well, fortunately, although it's deeper offshore, the activities are limited to putting a rock veneer along what's already here. So we don't need to go out very far into the channel to accomplish the goals of phase one of the project. So this shouldn't be more expensive than the other end.
Okay, that was.
It's easier, we can access it easier from the shore here in as much as we're just depositing rock.
Anybody else have any further questions?
If we don't do this with the wave action and sea level rise and whatnot, our shoreline is gonna be out here at Bay Street. So that's something we need to, you know, get moving on as quickly as we can. I mean, this, it's absolutely essential for Southport.
Absolutely, yes. And we've already seen the impacts at the other end of Bay Street where we've had to put in emergency measures in order to keep our infrastructure, the street and sidewalk, from eroding.
So we need to get it encumbered.
We do indeed.
As soon as possible.
We do indeed.
This was just a discussion. We don't have a vote. All right, would someone like to make a motion for task order number six?
So the motion reads to authorize the approval of.
So the motion reads to authorize the approval of Fath Alson Associates, Task 06, to continue the work for design and bidding for the shoreline stabilization project.
Is the motion in the second?
I would say clarify.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. All right, we are moving along to the discussion of proposed UDO text amendments with Ms. Mo Mihian.
Oh, thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. Staff have provided you with the considerations for updates to the Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO. And as you know, major updates to the UDO were paused while we were completing our comprehensive plan. And since that plan has been adopted in October, we are coming back, looking at the UDO, and it was requested at your September meeting that the Board of Alderman and Planning Board members send staff topics, ideas, recommendations, updates that you would like to see with the UDO. So that's what I have provided with you today, and I made sure to kind of put it in order of the UDO itself by section so that you can kind of follow that along, as well as adding some policy references from the newly adopted comprehensive plan to show that these are items that should be taken in consideration. There were no input from the public as requested in September, but as you know, the comprehensive plan does have an extensive public input process. So those policies that are included in the action matrix that I have included are considered by the public as well. So we're using those. I do want to state that these, you know, these updates range from a full reorganization of the plan to parking updates, new zoning districts. So they're big-ticket items. So I really want to make sure that we take the time, look at these cohesively with everyone, and we respectfully request that the discussion includes prioritizing the short, mid, and long-term priorities, including what can and needs to be updated in the very near future, and to consider if a new UDO is the best option to meet the goals of the city. This last UDO was taken up in 2020. There's been three to four amendments each year, so it kind of gets chopped up as the more you do. And we need to look at staff capacity to achieve the extent of these updates. We are capable of doing it, but we have so many other activities and projects going on that we may not have the time to do it in a true timely fashion. So with that, I would just leave it open to your discussion, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Who would like to get started?
I, I will. One of the thoughts I have initially is that we instruct staff to get bids and estimates for completely revamping the UDO, new UDO. To Bo's point, I think we need to look at outside opportunities for that. So I would say that's something we should do as we move forward, just so that we're informed in making a decision.
Would that be in lieu of considering these and adopting these? Yeah, because some of the stuff I think we need to move on with pretty quick.
I agree, I agree that we move forward with these right now, but I think as we move forward with these, we need to also be thinking about the next step, what the future looks like.
And, and I'll say in 2020, that update was, we hired the COG, the Cape Fear Council of Governments, to work on that, and they led that conversation working with the planning board. So that, that's typical of how we've done it in the past.
And it took a year and a, year and a half on those.
Well, every, because it has to be so well thought out, it is a time-consuming, to Mark's point, Alderman Spencer's point, is a time-consuming process. I do have some questions about some of this. Do you? Okay. So I'm just looking where, and, and really, these are, today's just a discussion. And I actually had sent some things that I'll bring up at the end, back in April of '24 when we initially, of which some have already been adopted, which was like way when I was checking them off. So that was cool. What I'd like to say, just under home occupations, where it says approval process of special moves, special use permits with standards that can administratively be approved for like home occupations and things like that, I kind of, I would kind of have a little consternation to make sure, because in, in this process now, we include the neighbors who are affected perhaps. So I'm not sure, there may be some like, you know, an in-home office that nobody comes to, or whatever that is, that would be staff approved, but I wouldn't want to see that component where the neighbors have the opportunity in a residential district where they're going to be doing a business use in a residential district that the neighbors could have input. So I just wanted to, to say that.
Does that, is that specifically addressed? Because I remember, I believe it was in Cades Cove, a resident who had some kind of.
Garage working business.
What was he doing?
Garage. Yes.
It was a woodworking.
A woodworking business. And, gosh, it took a long time and several trips around the merry-go-round before we concluded what he could do.
Sure. So there are different levels of home occupations, and it should, it's supposed to be things that are very low impact to the neighboring community. So that woodworking shop was, I think, a little peculiar in what we see now. A lot of them, they don't even generate traffic at all. So having to have someone come in for a special use permit with the money and the advertising thing, sometimes that's not really necessary. So just to increase the speed of someone being able to operate their business, that I think we could add some standards in there, like I said, to look at those. Do we want to go ahead and, you know, notify the neighbors so they can have a comment period prior to this being done administratively? That's not a problem, yeah.
I had, I had a bakery.
That work for the comment period? I mean, so they come to you for a permit, and then at a Alderman meeting, there's a public comment on it, or what?
No, ma'am, that would, it would be, comments would be submitted to staff. And then if there, if there were some, I think if there were some conflicts or some issues that were needed to be brought up, we can say it could trigger a special use permit to go to the Board of Adjustment. So we haven't gone through and thought these through specifically. These are just thoughts that have come up with discussions in the last several years.
Would it be posted on the property for the adjacent owners to see? How would the adjacent owners be notified if we do that? I know previously I had a home bakery that went in next door to my home. It was posted on their property prior to, and now I just have to smell that delicious shop all the time.
Yes, so by statute, we have to post the property for a special use permit to go, application process. There's like, it can be several different ways. I mean, I anticipate looking at kind of the way Kama does their riparian owners, that you just notify the owners by mail, certified mail, showing that you presented this idea to them. Then we make sure that we get that, and if there's any comments, we are able to take those into consideration at the time of decision.
Alderman Kelly, was that the Cookie Baker?
Yes, it was.
Oh, yeah, I got more. I got more. Now I'm on your second page, page 44. The parking standards, there's a lot in this section. It's huge. And so one of the things that I had on my page back last year was the need to change or, or my concern about, we had, I think, inadvertently changed the parking requirement for mixed use from one, from two spaces, which it had been historically two spaces because we have such limited parking downtown, till it got changed to one, which has changed a couple of projects and gave a lot of where parking probably we needed it. So I, and I'm confused because when you look at, on page 16 in the UDO, it said, this is for commercial, accessory dwelling for commercial. It requires two off-street parking spaces per residential unit. So it says that in commercial, but then when we go to mixed use, it says one space, and that's in commercial areas. So for me, that needs to be consistent, and it, and from my experience, it should be returned to the two. I know that the new comprehensive plan is in favor of trying to reduce parkings and things like that, but we're already challenged in a lot of ways downtown. So I think, you know, they're looking at, I think they, in a bigger urban market, that might be a different conversation, but I would just like that to be considered.
Did, did you include the fact that we would be going from two to one in residential accessory buildings, accessory dwelling?
No, I didn't. You can.
It's in here that we would change that. I think we really need to look at that, too.
Well, I think the difference between a commercial ADU and a residential ADU is you're essentially going to have a family member or someone that is helping with your family on site. So you're going to have your two parking spaces required for your single-family home and then one extra. So you, at this point, we aren't able to rent out that space, and it has to be someone that is living as part of the family that, that is using that. So it's, I think that's a little bit of a different situation, because it may not be a situation where you have a couple with two cars, but, but, I mean, certainly we can look at that.
The thing I think's interesting is that it's tied to just that residential unit. So if you had a four-bedroom, short-term vacation rental in the commercial district, and you only have a requirement for one, one car? But it should be, I mean, I don't know if we can base it on bedrooms, but it just makes sense that you would have something that was more in keeping with the number of bedrooms because you could have a six, I mean, help.
No, now the mixed use cannot be.
Well, mixed use could be if it's, if it is within the BD or CBD zoning district, yes, could be rented out.
Right, but it, it wouldn't be, it's limited in size.
Yes, correct.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Do we?
It's for the mixed use, it cannot be over, I don't know the exact proportion, but it can't be more than one and a half times the size of the commercial use below it. I can get the exact verbiage. Hold on. Okay. Yeah. There are.
This is not the 500 lady, right?
That's. So these are just things, conversation about all that.
That's correct, yes.
One of the other things, now I'm on page 46 in the agenda, where it says, A, accessory structures, and then for residential, one of the things that we talked about in the past is having some kind of rear setback for non-conforming lots so that it, it wasn't, everything wasn't built setback to setback to setback, and there wasn't any rear. So I'd like some conversation, I guess, with the planning board about, about that because we've had situations where only eight, they've built a huge structure and only eight feet was left in the back, so it's not even hardly enough for a dog to be let out. So that, that kind of conversation, and I don't know what that looks like, but it would be great if they could have that conversation.
We talk about accessory structures, and we also talk about accessory dwellings. Conceptually, those are two different things, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Under homestay, I did notice that, oh, I'm sorry, 48 in our agenda, it's G2B. I just FYI, it says full-time resident again, after however, near the end, sent it second to the last, and I think you were changing all those. So it's just, that's just housekeeping.
Thank you.
Do we have any idea how many of those there are?
I do. I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can get you those numbers absolutely, yes. I, I don't have the exact number. I would say for homestays, it's a smaller number than short-term rentals themselves, as full homes. For a homestay, I would say there's probably half a dozen. So that's someone that's renting out their room of their home, and they're living there as well.
Another thing that affiliated with this idea of setbacks is also, right now, I think overhangs are not included in setbacks. You allow overhangs to go into setbacks, and I think that needs to be looked at. I think that's problematic, especially in non-conforming lots where you might have a four-foot side setback, and you have a two-foot overhang with a gable roof shooting water off onto your neighbor's property. So I, I think that where I've lived before, overhangs were included in setbacks. So I think that's problematic for the planning board to think about.
And when we did, we had an applicant propose an amendment to the setback encroachments last two years ago, and that changed the structures themselves. So like the HVACs can go halfway in, but they, we did reduce the eaves to 18 inches into it. But we can absolutely look at the, including that as part of the setback, absolutely.
Because in a Florence storm, I'm just saying, okay. My next one was under the mobile vendor, which is on page 48. I just, it says a signed letter from, between the property owner and the business owner. Does it need to be something there? I know, I think your intent, if I'm remembering right, was to every time there was a new property owner that, that it was going to be operating, that, that led, there was another letter. I think this doesn't sound like, it sounds like once a year you do it. So I don't know if there's some kind of conversation to be had that makes it clearer that each place or something, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, I, I understand what the foundational thinking on that one is, but I have a question. Fourth of July, a food truck right in front of somebody's house, do they have to get a permit or a letter of okay from the homeowner?
Not for city sanctioned events, no. They'd still need to get a permit to make sure that they, following the state requirements, and they get their fire marshal approval, but that, but if it's a city event, like the food truck rodeo or the Fourth of July, then no, they do not, because we know that that this is this concession area that they will be operating.
I think the caveat to that would be if a private person decided they wanted a food truck in front of their home during the Fourth of July festival dates, it does not fall under the Fourth of July festival, and they would then need to go do the permitting process for that.
That's, yes.
I think I just have one more from my original last April list, which is 3.7. It's under residential standards, A5. Y'all don't have that to look at. It's just a clarification. When it, the way it reads, it says multi-family residential structures shall be controlled by maximum height, maximum number of dwelling units, maximum floor area ratio, the maximum open space ratio, and I think that maximum is meant to be minimum, because then when you detail them A, B, C, and D, it says minimum open, but I don't think we have a maximum open space required. So that's just, I don't know if that's a typo or, or how you can call that, but it's, they're, they're in conflict, and I think minimum is the right word.
Yes, and I remember that one. So we've got that one on, no worries.
And then I actually have one about the swimming pools. On page 49, number one, it says the coping or decking of the pool, whichever is closest to the property line and shall not be less than five feet in distance. So it's got to be less than five feet from the property line? It can't be more than five feet from the.
It can be, five is the minimum. So it can be 10 feet from the property line, no problem. It's just saying you cannot be, that coping cannot be less than five feet from the property line.
Okay, so it must be at least five feet. That sounds really confusing.
I, we can, we can, we can work on that.
Can we just work on that a little bit?
That's sure, absolutely.
What is the thinking on this? What is the thinking on this, that, that to not disturb the neighbors or what?
It was really kind of a cleanup. It's for open space so that you have your true setbacks are open. Um, it's, helps with the runoff. We don't have the impervious surface coverages right now. I'm really scared to put those in place because I think that would be considered a downzoning at this point because we're limiting the density you could have on your property. So it's really just to kind of keep the site and the rear yard open and to have some true open space on that site. If it's, gives anyone heartburn, we can, I, we don't have to change it, I just, it's something that, and it helps clarify it for staff.
Well, that's, I just wanted to make sure that I understood and it, the easier we can make it to read through people, uh, the better it is.
Yeah, I support it totally. Um, my question is, would this be, uh, handled the same for non-conforming lots when we talk about setbacks? So it would be a minimum of four feet for non-conforming lots or would, for five feet?
Sorry. Um, the, for the non-conforming lots, we can do the four feet, we can, or we can say absolutely has to be five feet, but the way we have been interpreting it is if your home can be four feet, then the coping should be four feet as well.
Okay, because that would make sense.
Yes.
Take care of this? A minimum of five feet?
Absolutely, we can change that.
One thing. Um, I mean, I actually have a lot, but, but today, one thing. Um, in twenty-twenty, when we approved the UDO, um, we had had Hurricane Matthew and we had had Hurricane Florence, but we had not had heavy rainfall flooding, not like what we've had seemingly every year. And yet, I think an overarching part of our floodwater planning, our, our efforts to reduce that, it all comes back to flooding in people's homes. Bringing me to a suggestion that I've made before, uh, which is that we require that homes not be built on a slab, that we require that the foundation be, I don't know what, a foot, two feet, uh, maybe even what we have as a minimum in, um, the flood zone, because now it seems like all of Southport is a flood zone at some point. So I realize that if we did that, it would raise the cost of, of homes, but you know, people who are not in the official, um, flood zone don't have flood insurance necessarily. And boy, when your home floods, the, the cost, the added cost of having bought a home with a high found, or at least a, uh, some height to the foundation, that's nothing compared to what you have to do to repair your home and replace your furniture and goods. So I would really like for us to think about what to do about new homes. We're going to have a lot of new homes here, uh, and putting them on a slab, I think, is like putting out a welcome sign for flooding.
Wouldn't that be handled by the flood zone that you happen to be in, whether it's AE or X or whatever it happens to be?
Say that last sentence again.
Right now, if you're in a X flood zone or an AE flood zone that determines how high you have to be, wouldn't that cover that?
Except that not much of, I mean, much of the flooding that we've had here, let's say Stewart, um, Park, uh, that's not in the flood zone. And so what I'm trying to get at is if you're in a designated flood zone, your, your foundation is high, but if you are not in a flood zone, you might not even, you, you don't have to get flood insurance. Your mortgage company is not going to require that you get flood insurance and you might not, because, you know, it costs something, but then you have no protection. So what I'm thinking about is people who are outside the flood zone.
I, I think your point is well taken. Uh, if you don't have flood insurance, uh, that's, that's, that's cheap compared to the damage that can be caused by, you know, a little, shall we say dampness under your house.
The flood insurance for most of those situations is anywhere from three hundred to five hundred dollars a year. So having flood insurance, but the other part of that is, we talk about affordability and the importance of affordability within Southport, and in some cases, this helps people to afford to be in Southport they couldn't otherwise. So I struggle with our, um, limiting people on what they can and can't do with regards to the foundation height. I, I completely agree, but I think there's other ways. We need to work on our stormwater. You know, part of the flooding that takes place is that our drains are stopped up and, and Public Works is doing everything they can. They get out there during the storm, they're cleaning out stuff. So, uh, I mean, I struggle with that a little bit low, I mean, on-
I, I know, we, we've had this conversation before, but think about North Caswell, those homes are below the street level and there's, they're just sitting ducks. I mean, no matter how much we clean out the drains and do everything we possibly can to deal with the floodwater, they're going to flood.
The water seems to be trapped or dammed in these blocks and they get stuck short-term. Our roads being paved have increased that dam. Every time they pave it, it makes it worse. So you get, you get on the twelve-hundred block of Lord flooding for an hour or two, but the foundations can't handle that. So I've seen where they use piers or pilings to deal with it, but I'm like Robert and I don't want to make people do it, I just want to suggest that it's a good idea. Uh, and if somebody wants to spend their money, let them do it, so. But definitely we've increased our flooding and it's not necessarily the river, it's our, it's trapped.
And I, I-
Uh, I'll make you a deal. I will find out from a couple of builders what the difference in cost would be from a slab foundation and let's say two feet. Your ear next time.
Yes, ma'am. I think it's a great idea. I have real estate clients in this situation who I have told, put it on pilings, it'll come and go. But this, when you have a slab, like, it's on the fourteen-hundred block that's un, it's not in Southport, and all those slab homes got slammed, uh, for other reasons, but, so I agree with what you're saying. I would encourage anyone that was going to be able to do that, but I don't want to demand anything or regulate anymore than we have.
And I will say to Alderman Carroll's point, um, flood insurance is very inexpensive for those homes that are outside of a flood zone. Um, I personally had it on my home that was outside of a flood zone, knock on wood, I have not needed to use it, um, but it, for less than a thousand dollars a year, I have that peace of mind, uh, knowing that if something were to happen, it would not be the end of my ability to stay in Southport.
I'm close to paying half of my home off in flood insurance, it seems.
Uh, I have just one more thing, oh, sorry. Uh, three-point-seven A six, uh, no more than twenty percent of the off-street parking associated with multifamily use may be located in the front yard facing public street. I would ask that the planning board consider maybe eliminating, putting, uh, off-street parking in front, uh, facing public streets to help with streetscapes, uh, that are more consistent with our historic character, it brings it to the street. Um, currently, they have a twenty-five foot setback, so I would just ask them to look at that conversation.
And then I have something to add, but I need to caveat this. I have something to add, but I need to caveat this because I have an inn in Southport, so I just want to bring that up on, on page fifty, under hotel motel or inn. It says that any building on the site must be a minimum of two hundred feet from any residential district. Um, our business district backs up to, uh, residential, which means that we could not do any hotels in town any longer.
You would be considered a boutique hotel?
Mm-hmm.
So does not follow these rules? So there's another standard that is, or S, so that's the S standard for, for boutique hotels, so you can't have it in the BD district, no problem?
It, it's one of those things that-
Understood, yes.
If I have to tear down a building because it is in functional obsolescence, um, I would love to be able to put a building back.
Is that, how do we define boutique hotels? I just, just for clarification purposes, is that-
It's a smaller, it's a smaller structure, smaller number of rooms. Um, there are also standards that you can't have certain accessory uses, like it doesn't allow a swimming pool or any kind of like outside bar type of situation, so that if it is adjacent to the residential area, it fits it more in with, it's congruous with that.
I mean, considering, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Kelly's, uh, situation, we're talking about new construction, right? I mean, we're not talking about, like, she would have to tear down her place and miraculously gain footage.
No, I don't, I don't think that that was the intention. I think that I just wanted to make sure that, given the current use, if I did need to tear something down because of storm damage or any number of reasons, that I would be able to rebuild, um, and not have to move out of town because I couldn't use my property in the current manner that, in which it's used. Anybody else have anything else on this UDO discussion? Yeah, Mark?
Um, we passed an ordinance, probably January, something of that nature, more probably dealing with stormwater and trying to do things where a driveway, if you had a U-shaped driveway, it had to be a certain width. You know that ordinance?
Very well, yes.
I need to revisit that ordinance because I've been visited by several people who say it's very impractical and it doesn't work. Um, and so I promised that I would ask to be, to at least look at it, and I'm trying to follow through, and I apologize, I didn't give it to you ahead of time.
No worries, absolutely. We, we, and I believe that is covered in part of some of the, um, non-residential design standards that we wanted to like a look at to make sure that it is, the driveways are compatible for both residential and non-residential.
Alderman Carroll, back to kind of how you started this discussion, um, are there parts of this that you see us moving forward with right now and parts of it that you would like to look at? Alderman Carroll mentioned at the beginning, you wanted to look at possibly having a consultant on some of it?
No, I think the planning board can deal with all the things that we're talking about. I think, I, I'm, I'm surmising, not speaking for Mo, but I think she's looking at the bigger ticket items of maybe reformatting how it is and making it more user-friendly, all of those, and then any kind of consistency. I really like the idea of comparing it with our code of ordinances. Many of our code of ordinances were written in eighty-four, so, uh, so I think, but that's all with a consultant. I think all of these are, are things we want to take as soon as possible, conversation. No, we're just sending it to the planning board, that's for their discussion.
Have you had, uh, the Board of Adjustment look at any of this? Because some of this is in their belly.
I have not, but they, they are very good about providing us input when, when variances come through or special use permits come through. They're very good about stating that an ordinance is, is hard to interpret or read and they want to make it, you know, more user-friendly. So we have made a few, um, updates for language itself to help clarify for users of the UDO. I mean, everyone, I mean, these are, I'm, would love anyone that has any input on these to take a look and give us some feedback. I'm happy to take any of that.
No, I think this is a great start for what needs to happen. Thank you. And any further discussion on this? All right, we're going to move right along to our public comment policy. Alderman Carroll?
I brought this to the board last month, I believe, and asked for, uh, your thoughts. I haven't heard from anybody. I think that the only thing, but, well, I heard, yeah, okay, excuse me, you are somebody, I apologize. Uh, I have talked to a few of you, but there wasn't really anything that stood out. I think the only thing I would recommend we consider removing is item, uh, three under procedures. Um, it simply put, would put a time limit on, uh, speakers and we haven't done that in quite some time, so unless anybody has a recommendation to do so, I would, I would say we adopt this as written with that removal.
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not removing it or not?
Not, not restricting the time that people making public comment are allowed.
So you agree with me?
That's what he just said.
Say it again.
We would adopt the, the, the guidelines with the removal of item three, which would restrict time.
Okay.
Is that a motion? Second, here in second. Any further discussion?
I would like to, um, not vote on this today and do so at our next public meeting and give people, give the public a chance to weigh in on this. We, this is affecting them directly.
What is, what is the county's policy on that? Were there three minutes?
The county is three minutes for the planning board as well as the, uh, commissioners meetings, and I believe that this, um, the, the county now has at the planning board meetings, they have a little lighted, um, looks like a little mini stoplight that goes the different colors, um, yellow, red, green, and then, um, green, yellow, red, and then during the commissioners' meetings, they actually have on an overhead a three-minute, um, YouTube short that goes from green, yellow to red during that time, so it allows for the speaker to know how much time they have.
You don't want to infringe on anybody's right to speak, but three minutes is a long time.
Um, the other part of their policy is that if multiple people are speaking on the same subject, that they have a spokesperson. The spokesperson, I believe, has eight minutes to speak on whatever that subject is, and then, um, they speak on behalf of the group rather than having individuals going on forever.
And as part of my, uh, motion, that removed that as well. So it says a spokesperson designated for a group of three or more individuals may be allotted extra time. I, I would just recommend we remove that, um, and I don't think it's in here again as it relates to one, one spokesperson for a group of people on the same subject.
And, and just to follow up on Alderman Davis, this is really decorum. I, I don't, I don't think, you know, it, we, in the absence of the three-minute conversation or a designated time conversation, we're talking about decorum here. That's why I'm prepared to go ahead and vote for it. Um, if we want to have the, a discussion about adding a minutes limit conversation, then we can add that to a Thursday meeting, but it, because that's really the only, the rest of this is, is how to, how to have decorum, that's all it is.
You know, decorum is in the eye and ear of the beholder. How would you define decorum?
Well, I'm glad you asked. Now, there, there is rules of decorum just at the bottom here, and then, you know, there's certain things that are put in here that say, "Public comments shall be relevant to city business, municipal services, or matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Aldermen." I mean, those types of statements, I don't want people coming in here and airing their dirty laundry, uh, between them and their neighbors in a Board of Aldermen meeting where in many cases we have no, it doesn't affect us, it doesn't, so we just need a policy in place. We haven't had a policy in place, I'm a little surprised, uh, but this will, uh, you know, bring decorum to our, to our meetings moving forward.
I would also ask if we could add something where people are not, uh, allowed to use scenting or loud noises during the, um, anything that has a smell or loud noises? Yes.
Can you bring that language to us at the next meeting? We can adopt this and then we can add that to it?
I would feel comfortable with that. All right, and someone like to make a motion with the, all right, all in favor? Any opposed?
What was the motion?
The motion is to adopt the policy as written with the removal of item three, and I'll read item three. It says each speaker will be allocated a certain number of minutes, uh, a spokesperson designated for a group of three or more individuals- A spokesperson designated for a group of three or more individuals may be allotted up to X number of minutes. The mayor or presiding officer may adjust these times depending on the number of speakers and the agenda.
So the, we propose to vote this in as our policy without giving the public an opportunity to know about it and to speak on it. Is that correct?
I think we had public comment today. It's been on the agenda and no one showed up for it. And certainly we've got two items, one that I just suggested as well. It's possibly the time allocation that we've asked to come back to another meeting. So I think that, I, I think the public notice has been made for this and the, this is more of a decorum discussion than a limiting discussion at this point.
As an example for the public, item one, public comment period shall be scheduled at every regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen. I don't think anybody's going to object to that, right? No? Item two, persons wishing to speak must sign up. We already do that, right? In advance of the meeting. So I, I don't know how these contradict what we're already doing. It just puts it into a policy.
Is there an urgency to do it today instead of next Thursday?
We have got to do the people's business. Like, let's keep moving. Let's, government runs slow enough.
So we have already had, we've already voted. Let's redo the vote since, do you now understand what we're voting for? Alderman Davis?
I do, and I, I did not realize we were actually voting. I had missed or misheard that. And therefore, if, if we're voting, then my vote is no.
Okay, so if, for argument's sake, let's go back and vote again. All in favor of the motion as presented, say aye. Any opposed? Nay, all right. Madam Clerk, you've got that. Thank you. Moving on for our managers' reports.
Thank you, just a few things this morning. I think we all, board members and public had great events this past weekend down in the yacht basin around the city. I really enjoyed attending the Wooden Boat Show and the holidays at Southport Baptist. It was great events this past weekend around town. As has already been mentioned, Public Works want to give them a shout out for making progress on our stormwater system, all that we can as staff. We've discovered several stormwater drains that were covered up and filled and they have since removed the, the coverings of dirt from those on West St. George Street, West Owen Street, made drain improvements on West Leonard Street. So I want to give them a shout out for all their hard work as we look forward to more projects in the new years where, as well as grants we're applying for to move along those bigger projects. So just want to give them that shout out and appreciate their hard work. So that's all I have this morning. Thank you.
All right, and then we'll do board comments. Karen, would you like to start then? Alderman Davis?
Um, I received a, a message from the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee asking me to be sure to let everybody know about some things coming up, including yoga. And by golly, I can't find it. But our Parks and Recreation Director is here. Would you be willing to mention these things?
Why, yes, she would.
And I apologize, Heather.
Um, yes, actually yoga started today. We're doing it Monday, Wednesday and Friday. I think it's seven thirty to eight thirty on Mondays. And Wednesday, eight thirty to nine thirty. And then nine thirty to ten thirty. And Friday's the same schedule. But it is on our website and Cheyenne has blasted it out on every part of our social media. So it is at the J C building. But that is our new program. And then November, we've got all of our Thanksgiving programs, senior luncheons. And we do Maureen, otherwise, otherwise known as Cookie. She hand cooks a meal for them homemade and they bring the sides, of course. And that will be next Wednesday at the senior building. And, you know, our after school, Going Strong. And then we have, you know, camp for them when they're out of school this month at our office. So, and then we're gearing up for Christmas. So, thank.
Alderman Carroll?
Yeah, it was great seeing the number of staff out this weekend at our event. This was Noah's first Wooden Boat Show and I was very proud to see him out there representing our community well. And then this morning, I believe it was Public Works was out there getting the barricades up nice and early. So I appreciate all of the effort that goes into these festivals.
Spencer? Alderman Lee?
Just saying that this, this was a great weekend, a lot of stuff going on. Wooden Boat Show is always a treat. One of my neighbors built a wooden boat in his garage and it was a treat watching him get it out.
I had the pleasure of participating in the Steed Bonnet Regatta this weekend. So that was, it's always a fun time. We didn't have a ton of wind when we got out there, but it did start to pick up a little bit later in the day. Attended the fire department's trunk retreat with my children. That was a wonderful event as always, and I thank them for putting that on. And the Wooden Boat Show, the holidays and the Jack Heidelberg Foundation Boat Pull was another great event this weekend. So we had lots and lots going on. I appreciate the entire staff being everywhere, all over the place. We had so much going on in town and I think it went pretty well overall. And then the, just want to mention again, for those that missed the beginning of the meeting, the mayor had a death in the family and is out of state, sending prayers to his family for that. He is actively on the way back and should be back this afternoon for all of the things that are coming up as well. And then there are no further comments from us. We're going to go into closed session for a personnel issue and we will be back out after that. So all in favor? Any opposed? Make a motion, entertain a motion to come out of closed session? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All in favor? Any opposed? Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.